Hello, I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, October 11th, 2017. We're starting tonight at 6:30 PM, which is a little 30 minutes later than we normally do. All commissioners are here and accounted for with the exception of Commissioners Cabe and Clark, whom are absent and excused. And then before we move on to the non-agenda public comments, Commissioner Zorn's brought something to my attention just a little while ago that I wasn't aware of, but apparently this past weekend, City of Bothell lost a former council member and former Planning Commission member, Sandy Gwynn, and she passed away, I guess, this Saturday. And she serves as deputy mayor and she was also on the Planning Commission. I believe she served for, you know, her service was 12-plus years. So if we could just have like a few minutes of silence for her, let's start with that. No, nobody in the audience, there's no non-agenda public comments, no minutes to approve, no new business. There's no public hearing tonight, the public hearing was closed, no study session. So we move on to old business, and it looks like we have Mike Stanger from Arch, who's joining us tonight to help us wrap up the housing strategy update. And with that, I'll guess I'll hand it over to either Mike and/or David Boyd with City of Bothell.
I just wanted to say a couple of words. First of all, thank you all for being flexible with the schedule and the later start time. And I want to thank Commissioner Zorn's for not only bringing us the sad news about Sandy Gwynn's death, but also for your efforts to connect those of us who worked with her in the past, in her last days. So thank you for that. So with that, the, and again, I wanted to just kind of preface the discussion about the housing strategy. When we left it, that we were going to try to do this final review via email, and Planning Commission authorized Commissioner Vleet to sign off on it. But it took a while to get the final draft done, enough time had passed, and that we felt that it would probably make sense to reconvene, just to have this one last chance to go over this. This will certainly change as it goes forward. These will be your recommendations to the city council. At least I anticipate there'll be some tweaks along the way as they review it. But I think it's good to have a package that you're comfortable putting forward. The plan is not to take it to council until after the start of the year, so that we start fresh with the new council that will be in place at that point, given that there will be at least three new council members. We didn't think it made a lot of sense to start the process this year and have it go over to a new slate. So there'll still be a little bit of time before it goes to council. I'm hoping that we can get it on their agenda early in 2018. And then one last comment, just kind of a formatting thing. There was some talk about that, the section about the timely strategies and whether it should go up front, whether it should be an appendix. We've put it at the end of the main report, and the idea is that ultimately, this could serve as a handout, that as we publicize this effort more, that we could have that available for the public, just a two-sided, one-pager. So that's the idea with that particular piece. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike, who was more involved in making the final changes based on your direction from July.
I want to thank you again as well for being flexible with the time, accommodating the meeting that we had in Kirkland before this. Arthur intended to be here as well. He's got a ruptured disc in his back and is having trouble getting around, and made it through that one, but he told me at a time he didn't think he would make it here for this one. So he sends his regrets. I didn't intend to spend much time talking about the changes we made, other than to say that we hope that we were faithful to the directions that you gave us, trying to reconcile what was in the middle of the report to the table or handout that's now labeled "timely strategies" at the end. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or, you know, take any additional changes that you'd like to make and put those into the finished product. We'd like this to be you to own this as your product going to the council.
Okay, so Mike, thank you for that. I'm sorry to hear about Arthur. Which part of it, were you saying, your direction was a certain part of the packet tonight? You said that...
Well, a lot of our discussion, your discussion at the meeting that we dealt with this last, was in the section on Tier One strategies. In this version, it starts at the bottom of page six. The strategies then are listed going onto page eight, and then, let's see, there was also a box that, yeah, I think that ended up, my memory's a little fuzzy, I think it ended up being the box on, no, I take that back, I think it was, oh. I may have to compare it to the previous version, but I think that box may have disappeared and was consolidated into the timely strategies table. The idea with the timely strategies table was to recognize the themes that were kind of pulling together, the strategies that we felt found in your discussions, that you were going back to time and again, and really kind of emerging as the highlights for the commission.
Okay, great, thanks, Mike. And it looks like we are adjourned by Arthur. Arthur, thanks for making it out tonight.
And as the memo stated, that the revisions were made to the box on page four, the housing needs highlights.
Yeah. And just to be clear, tonight, we're not adding anything new. We're just, if there's something that wasn't corrected, that we need corrected in the past, or anything you need clarification on, but other than that, we won't be adding anything new to... Okay, and with that, I guess, you know, there's no public hearings, closed tonight. If there's any comments from the commissioners or clarifications needed, absolutely, Commissioners Warrens.
Well, when I sat with my, I like being old school, because then I can sit with my paper and just compare pages. And I liked the editing that was on this. I remember there were chunks that we'd said that it was a little redundant and confusing, and I really liked the way that this was cleaned up. I even made the notes. Nice addition on the timely strategy. So that's comment number one. The other comment was, and it's just a point of curiosity for myself, and I think that's the sum total of comments that I have to make tonight. I don't have a page for it, it's in the appendices, and there's a comment on the very last page before we get to Appendix C, that ADUs are not tracked separately. Is there any plans for the city to be counting ADUs? That's my only question.
Actually, and now we do track them, so we didn't in the past, but we at least have the capability and our permitting software to track those separately.
Do we want to make note of it here, or is it somewhere else? It's on the page right before we get to the charts. Says, however, because ADUs are not tracked separately in the city's permit tracking system, the exact number of ADUs that may be permitted is unknown, on the top of the page.
Yeah, that would be easy to do, and I'll...
I don't know if you want to do it, but that's the sum total of what caught my eye.
That sounds reasonable. Are there any other commissioners who have any other questions or comments? Or does Arch have anything, or Arthur, do you have, or Mike, okay. Commissioner Cecil?
I was just gonna say, thanks for the rework, it looks great to me, so that's it. Thank you.
Dave, you got anything?
I would only, I would comment that Mike, I want to give credit to Mike, because he did a lot of the work on this, so it was sort of a more, we get it in front of all of us this time, more so than we did last time, so I'm glad, it feels like it's more tied together, but Mike did a lot of the work on this.
I would agree, I think it looks good, and I would support it as is.
Agreed, thanks for all the work, all the meetings, getting all this together. I know we kind of, we're gonna let me sign it, but I'm glad that it actually, it came together really good here, and I'm glad we had a meeting to kind of go over it and put the finishing touches on. Thanks again to Arch for that. And, oh, Dave?
Just to get back to Commissioner Zorn's edit, is, what I would suggest is that we change that to read, because ADUs were not previously tracked separately. The exact number of ADUs that may have been permitted is unknown, and I'll double-check on our ability to track those. I know that we do code, we actually have a separate form for ADUs now, so I'm quite sure that we now have the ability to do that. Previously, we didn't have a good way to track those.
So Dave, on that, if you were to do a new building permit that had a main building and an ADU, is that two separate permits, or is it just one that has a track or a code that you plug in and...
I think in that case, it would be a single permit, but I'll check on that and make sure that the verbiage here matches that.
Yeah, that seems perfectly fine there, Dave, thanks.
So, Dave, just as a reminder, do we need a motion on this, or did we pass this last time?
We did, and agreed to do final edits via email and authorize the chair to sign off on it, so I don't think a motion is, I think just consent is what we're looking for.
So no motion is needed, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there, I guess, a motion to close discussion tonight on this topic? Because we're discussing it, right? Do we need to make any kind of motion here at all?
No, you can move on to the...
Move on. Before we do move, it looks like somebody joined us in the audience, I just didn't know if they had any, if there was any need for public comment, no, just, thanks for joining us tonight.
Checking in, we just did housing around Bothell, so...
Oh, great.
About 2,000 things.
Oh, great, thanks. It's always great to look out there and see the residents coming down. Thank you for coming down tonight, appreciate it. Okay, so with that, we'll just move on to reports from staff. Update on Canyon Park Regional Growth Center?
Yeah, and I'm gonna turn that over to Director Burdette. Can do it at the podium, or I can give up my seat here?
Sure, absolutely. Hi, good evening, Tom Burdette, Community Development. The principal thing that we're communicating tonight is that we're inviting the public and the commissioners to an open house workshop on October 26th, here at City Hall, from 6 to 8. Last time we met with the commission, I think there was a question about notifying, doing notice, so that more than three planning commissioners could attend, and we're going to go ahead and take care of that. So as many commissioners who are interested in participating, we'd certainly like to facilitate that and have you there. It's at your discretion and option, but we'll go ahead and notice it, and so feel free to come and participate in that open house.
Thanks for doing that, Tom.
It's been, we've had one meeting with the stakeholders facilitated by the consultants. That was two weeks ago, a very good meeting, high-powered group of stakeholders, including small business, large corporations, Chamber of Commerce members, just a good group of intelligent people who really have an interest in Canyon Park. Part of that group included owners of flex space, owners of leased space, as well as property management, who work day in and day out with the private roads and the covenants and those elements to make it a beautiful park that it is. We heard a number of comments about some of the challenges in transportation. We heard comments about ancillary amenity uses for workers. We heard some solutions, that a number of the larger employees are starting to implement shift work, so that employees can report to work at different times and leave at different times, so that there's some relief to the peak hour commuting. And it was just, it was a very, very productive session. So the consultant has taken that information, built upon that in terms of preparing for this open house workshop, which will include everybody who's interested and wants to give us feedback on how we can begin to structure our visioning program for Canyon Park. As, you know, as this comes forward, we don't anticipate bringing forward a document, or, we don't anticipate bringing forward a formal action to the commission. We do plan to, you know, share documents and make sure that the Planning Commission's engaged with the results of the study, but we don't anticipate having to adopt any code changes or changes to the comprehensive plan this year. Next year, yes, certainly, but for this year, not yet. So that's kind of a status report. I think that one of the things we probably need to do is to share some of the information on demographics and market data with the commission. So we'll get a packet of that and send that off to you, so that you have that as some background information on the statistics that have been gathered so far. So that's, I think that's enough, that we can whet your appetite to attend on the 26th, and hope to see you there.
Tom, are, so there'll be a series of meetings, or have been some already, is any of that going to be made available? Are we recording or taping any of that?
We didn't record the first one, but we can send you a summary of the, yeah, we can send you a summary of the minutes of that meeting, there's only been one.
Yeah, gotcha.
And given the nature of that park, it's kind of different than the downtown area in terms of different approaches that will be brought forward for planning and implementation. And that'll trigger different strategies for how we solve some of the problems. Generally speaking, though, the, you know, the kind of the land use designations and updating of the subarea plan within the comprehensive plan will be similar, but the strategies for implementation will be quite a bit different, yeah.
Yeah, and Tom, thank you for that, giving us the background on that. And if there's opportunity in the future, it would be great, in my mind at least, if maybe one of the planning commissioners or two were given the opportunity to sit in and listen on it.
Sure.
Even if we're not, you know, actually going through it, I think it'd be advantageous to open it up to anybody who wants to attend, or, you know, somebody who wants to attend.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the workshops are open to the public, or the stakeholder meetings are open to the public, and certainly we can do that, but it's just, it's really an interesting group of people, and I think the Planning Commission will feel that we've assembled a wide selection of participants for this stakeholder group. Certainly, as more implementation strategies do come forward, and we start structuring the next phase, Phase Two, for 2018, you know, more engagement in different areas will be necessary, you know, that's just the nature of the beast and how it goes. But to get these original thoughts on the paper, this first round was facilitated by Chris Metford of Community Attributes, and, you know, even in his own words, he said, "This is really a powerful group," and he was impressed with their interest and willingness to roll up their sleeves and pitch in to make some changes.
Great.
Yeah.
Quick question, sorry if I missed it, the location for the open house, is that here at City Hall?
Yes, we're planning to do it right here, yeah.
Thanks.
6 to 8 PM on the 26th.
Yeah.
Great.
So one thing I, for commissioners as well, is we've got a website up and running, and please log into the Bothell homepage, and that'll guide you to where you can provide some input through a little bit of interactive survey on Canyon Park, and feel free to go to that website and participate and share your thoughts, so that would be great.
Okay, thanks for that, Tom, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Looking forward to the 26th. And then now we have an update on UW Bothell Cascadia College Master Plan?
Yeah, and I'll take that, so the city council held a, well, we staff of, city staff and from the institutions did a presentation to city council on October 3rd of the campus master plan, which I have a copy of here. It's available on both the UW Bothell and Cascadia College websites, so it's an excellent document, it sets forward a 20-year plan for growth on the campus. And we will be going back to council next week on the 17th for a public hearing, so that's an opportunity to give input on the plan. The plan is accompanied with one comprehensive plan amendment, various code amendments to implement the master plan, and then a development agreement between the city and both institutions that kind of lays out how this will, how all of these documents interact, and also some mitigation or conditions of approval of the development agreement. So I encourage you to check out the master plan on the institution's websites, and again, if you care to, to participate in that public hearing on the 17th. The schedule calls for it, council to take action on November 14th, and the institutions will be taking the master plan to their boards, the University of Washington Board of Regents, and Cascadia College's Board of Trustees as well, in November, December, potentially into January. So that's moving forward and coming to completion, the work on that. Any questions on that?
Thanks, Dave, thanks for letting us know about next Monday, October 17th.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, sorry, Tuesday, 17th. Anybody else have any questions regarding the comments? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the third part, reports, discussion of planning commission calendars and protocols.
So I just wanted to touch base quickly on a few things. One, again, thanks for accommodating the later start. It did raise, however, a continuing question about the use of the new city emails, because I didn't initially get feedback. So I wanted to check in with commissioners to see if there are issues, if you're checking that email less frequently than you checked your previous email, your personal email accounts, or, and to make sure that you're all getting those emails.
Commissioner Warrens?
It's just a learning curve. I mean, we don't, I don't carry my laptop with me everywhere, so when I check the email, it's when I'm by my computer, and I get and I understand why it's not prudent to have, access it through our phone, so it's just a learning curve for me.
If you have an iPhone, and I assume this works for Samsung, if you go to the web browser on your phone, you can create a shortcut that puts it on your screen that you then tap and find it, so it's, there is an easier way to get there than...
Okay, so I have a Samsung, but once it's on my phone, doesn't that make my phone vulnerable if anybody wants to, or not? I thought there was some concern that if my phone is looking at it as well.
No, it's still getting it through the web browser, not through the mail app, so there's, but still, yeah, I'm not checking it, I mean, I'm having to remember, because it's an extra step, then personal emails.
There's also an app in the iTunes store that I used, it's OWA. You type in your email, you type in your password, you get notifications, just like with any other email client on your phone, and it works really well for me, so.
So that's all good to know, it's good to know from a staff standpoint to understand that you might not be checking it as frequently as you would.
But I think we're checking it more frequently, we're kind of getting them to, but it's good to have a couple other opportunities there, applications to pull up on the phone to...
And I encourage you to share, you know, continue to share points, tips that help you keep tabs on that.
And do we have, like, we have all the commissioners, do we have what people, everybody using them pretty much, or is it, I don't know if they've checked?
So when I hadn't heard from everybody and sent it to the old email list, I got a mix of responses from the city email list and from the old addresses.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll follow up with the folks that responded with their personal accounts to make sure that they... make sure that they do indeed have that.
Yeah, because, yeah, they made it pretty clear to us, we need to start doing that after the training.
Yeah, and I was reluctant to even send the follow-up message, but until we work out all the kinks and...
Yeah, 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 there's a, exactly.
So, the other thing I wanted to talk about is the calendar. You'll notice that we try to give you at least a couple of months of calendar dates in advance, but we really, at this point, we don't have anything ready to bring you in November. So, I guess the best way I can put this, because of all the hard work you did during the early part of this year, and even the last part of last year, we're still transitioning through, getting a lot of that through and presented to council. And Bruce with the Canyon Park plan, and I've been pretty busy with the campus master plan, just haven't had the bandwidth to prepare items. There are a few items, some miscellaneous, well, some smaller code amendments that are scheduled that council initiated but didn't prioritize necessarily for this year. So, we're going to try to prepare something for you to work on through the end of the year, but it's a work in progress right now. So, if you'll bear with us on the calendar, we will be getting back to you as soon as we have some dates for you.
Okay. I just have a quick question on something we passed. Do you have any idea with the tree retention portion? I don't know if I asked that, like, can you, like, just a real brief, it doesn't have to be a long explanation, but I believe it maybe wasn't taken up, or it was kind of shelved. And we did do the clustering, which is great, but can we just touch base on that one more time?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Good question. City Council separated tree retention from clustering while the planning commission made recommendations on them together. City Council, I think they did that because they were having a difficult time with some of the public input that was coming in on tree retention, and it was, and it was information that really hadn't come forward with the commission from the building community. So, but they wanted to come together with at least a vote on the clustering because they weren't really sure whether or not there would be enough votes on the council for clustering. So, they did that, and that finally was passed, and the tree retention was held, was kind of held back. Now, it appears that the city council and our city manager is looking to bring tree retention back to council with the same recommendations that you made and consider that separately. So, my direction, my most recent direction is to, once the campus and Canyon Park is kind of up and running, then bring this tree retention back to city council. I initially thought, well, maybe it should come back to the planning commission because there's new information. But I guess the city manager has talked to the mayor and deputy mayor, and they think that they can, at least in a, kind of a quick, well, I shouldn't say quick. I guess I would say in sort of orthoscopic type of surgery that we can bring forward at least clustering or a tree retention ordinance that looks at the percentage of preserved trees on the site.
So, we thinking by, in this calendar year, or?
Yes, possibly.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Be awesome, even if we don't have a meeting, if you just, it'd be awesome just to, if you could report back if you know anything.
So, as soon as I have a date.
To any of us.
I'll let you know.
Okay, great.
Because I know that you'd like, some of the commissioners would like to be there, and I know that the council members would like to hear from the commission. So, as soon as the date will, is set, it's not going to be, and it won't be this month. I know that'll be at least the end of November or December.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
So, clustering did pass, Tom?
Yes.
And when does that get ratified or become effective?
It's ratified now.
So, it is part of the code now?
It is now, yeah. Now, matter of fact, I was searching the code just the other day in the PUD language, and it now has all five tracks or paths for PUD development in the city.
Okay.
Yeah, Bruce told us last time, there's already a development or two, I don't know if one's actually gone for, but two or three that are considering it, and one of them that I think is almost, they're already going to use it.
Yeah, we have had a couple of developers showing interest to utilize that section under the PUD. Yeah, that's a good thing.
The other thing I was curious about was some of the downtown code amendments that we were considering over the last year, the status of those, and have those been implemented as well? I'm thinking specifically about some of the awnings and right-of-way uses. Have those?
Yeah, and I apologize, I should have reported back to you on that, and I should have prepared to report back to you on that. So, the council did adopt some of the code amendments that planning commission recommended, but not all. And at the risk, well, I don't want to misstate from my memory and doing this off the top of my head. So, I would be happy, though, to send an email, kind of explaining what they did pass and what they chose not to pass.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I think I did report back that they considered separately the height measurement method, and they did pass the recommendation there to use the International Building Code method for measuring height. So, no more building envelopes with slope tops that follow the contours. It will, it'll go off of an average elevation and then go up to a flat top box, which is going to make it easier for both reviewers and applicants. And also will mean that both reviewers and applicants don't need to calculate it two different ways, one for the building department and one for the planning department.
Great, thanks, Dave. Thanks, Tom. And thanks again, Mike, for joining us and for the excellent report you gave us, and for the community who came out tonight in the audience. Any reports from members?
I wish I would have said something before Arthur left, but Mike, please share this with Arthur. We really appreciate all the work you've done. I know I speak for myself, and I'm sure others up here. I think we had, what, six or seven meetings on that? It spanned quite a few months, and I think the result shows all of the work that you and Arthur and others up here and staff put into it. It paid off, so thank you.
Okay, any other reports from members? Okay, you have a motion to adjourn, then. Motion to adjourn. All those, either say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. We are adjourned.